Good evening, I wish to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order. Please stand with me as I give the invocation and followed by the pledge of allegiance. Lord, you also have instructed us to pray for our governing officials, and we come to you in the spirit of this petition. We pray for our national, state, and county government, and its executive legislative and judicial servants. May they indeed be servants unto the people and govern in a virtuous manner that protects the right to life, liberty, and property. May they all heed your mandates in Romans 13:4 to be in positions of authority as God's servant, and for the good of the public. They govern in what we confess are difficult times. May they plead with you to give them wisdom, and may your grace to govern wisely be poured out on them. Protect us from the oppression and loss of freedoms that other countries have experienced, and help us to value and preserve freedom, which we know comes only from you, in your most holy and precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the heavens and with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, thank you for coming out this evening. We do remind you to please silence your cellphones, but if they go off, we'll wait. First item on the agenda is a public hearing on a proposed application in partnership with Brick Capital Community Development Corporation for community development block grant funding, and Ms. Kennedy is here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's been awhile since I've been here, about a year to be exact, for the same item. At this time, we are looking into preparing a community development block grant application to the Department of Commerce. The requirements for an application are to conduct a public hearing. We are having one with you all tonight for the county, and we will have one for the city next week, because when we first started this, we weren't quite sure who was preparing the application, so we advertised for both entities. The neighborhood revitalization category is designed to provide grants to local units, subgovernments, for housing, housing-related activities, and public facilities. Awards are made on a competitive basis, and are based on the number of applications received compared to the funding that is available. All municipalities in North Carolina are eligible, and then all counties except for the four HUD-designated Irma counties are eligible. There are CDBG entitlement cities throughout the state that are the larger metropolitan areas, and they will not be applying for these funds. This year, there is an award ceiling of $950,000. Approximately 20 million is available. When you do particular projects like this, say if economic development wanted to prepare an application in a different category, this public hearing satisfies their public hearing number one also. It's to allow residents and citizens an opportunity to express views concerning community development work, available funds, and all the eligible activities. In order to prepare an application, you have to meet three, one of three national objectives. It has to benefit low and moderate income persons, prevent or eliminate slum and blight, and address an urgent need. You can choose from things as water and sewer infrastructure, neighborhood revitalization, housing, economic, and special allocations for disaster and hurricane recovery. It's administered by the Department of Commerce, the Rural Economic Development Division, and they also have priorities that may provide site clearance, or building, or infrastructural support for businesses that commit to job retention and creation within the economic development category. Neighborhood revitalization focuses on low and moderate income housing-related activities and community revitalization. It must benefit 100% low and moderate income persons, or meet the slum and blight national Activities can include housing rehabilitation, public facilities and improvements to address special needs such as shelters for victims of domestic violence, or homeless families, transitional facilities for the homeless or homeless families, and non-homeless persons with special needs, senior and community neighborhood centers, single-family homeownership development, multi-family rental housing development, and infrastructure activities such as water and sewer connections to existing housing. These are competitive, and are due September 30th of this month, or of September. There's also infrastructure funding available through the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, and there are disaster and recovery and mitigation funds that are also available. Again, as I said, this is public hearing number one for the county, should you decide to write an application in any capacity, and we'll also do one for the city. With these projects are lots of compliance documents that you have to agree to when you fund one of these projects, but you don't have to worry about those until the entity receives the funding. We had to publicly advertise, I think the county handled a public advertisement in the Sanford Herald, 10 days before the date of today, and allow for citizens to provide written comments. Have you received any written comments? So duly noted for the minutes, and I'll let you open the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Ms. Kennedy? Commissioner Lovick? Commissioner Reeves?
Did you indicate which local government was going to apply for Brick Capital?
I did not yet. I can.
Thank you.
Well, we had decided that because it's public hearing number one, it would be just a general, but I understand your packets said that Triangle J and Brick Capital would be submitting an application to the county of Lee. That was occurring because the city had an open CDBG project on Linden Avenue, a partnership with the Housing Authority. They have waived the requirement for an open grant. After speaking with the state on Friday, and because the majority of this project will be infrastructure-related, and the infrastructure will be within the city and owned by the city, it was preferable that we write the application through the city of Sanford. So that's the route we are going to take right now, to write the application through the city of Sanford.
Did you secure that in writing by chance, or will you?
I will. I did not.
I would bet you would.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Lavalley? Commissioner Carver?
One question ahead, you mentioned a $953,000 number, and then a $20 million number. Is the 953 relevant to Lee County? Is that?
No, the 23 million was overall for that category in the state. The 950,000 is the most you can get in a grant application for your entity. You can go zero to 3, to 950,000.
Okay, so we're really competing against the $20 million total number, I guess?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Connect, I know you walked in during her brief. Any questions on the CD community development block grant?
Like you said, she said it was just going to be passed through, through the city now, right?
Yes, sir.
That's how she answered Commissioner Reeves' question.
So, how does our portion fit in? Once you sell the homes, we get our portion back, or?
No, the county's commitment, which you may be discussing later, is a local commitment of an amount, maybe via your ARPA money, for the project. I don't know that that's the correct terminology, because the leases in the best of the world have better words for that. But anyway, there'll be a local commitment on behalf of the city and the county towards this project, in order to hopefully leverage the $950,000 that we would get for CDBG. Once the homes are sold, they will go through a homebuyer process that Brick Capital has, and be sold to individual residents that are income-eligible, and any development fees would come back to the program within Brick Capital. But the funds from the county are going towards infrastructure.
Any other questions?
I do have a question regarding the $200,000 revolving loan fund that we provided the Brick Capital Community Development.
I would prefer you let Carrie answer.
Yeah, I was going to say, Carrie, could you respond to that, please? I guess the gist of my question is, is that $200,000 going to be put together to match with the infrastructure requests?
That $200,000 that we have borrowed from the county for that three-year period has been used for us to continue our home building. What we are asking for specifically regarding the 850,000 is for infrastructure, to go towards infrastructure. So we will continue to use that revolving line for the construction of actual homes there. And just to be clear, what makes us be able to build and sell homes to low to moderate income families is our ability to leverage state dollars, federal dollars, local dollars, in order to be able to keep our homes affordable. We are not a for-profit developer that has to go in and pay for their own infrastructure, and then when they sell the house, they are reimbursed for said infrastructure costs. In order for us to keep our housing costs low, we are able to leverage those other dollars there, so that our ultimate recipients, the low to moderate income families, can get a purchase price that is lower than the market value. And again, the market value is that developers put in, pad it with all the infrastructure and development costs that's necessary to build the neighborhoods that they build.
You're gearing these up, I think, for teachers and things of this nature, right? Are you giving them first shot at this? How are you going to go about it?
Yes, so again, because of the funding from the state, the first priority is low to moderate income families there, and so we certainly are trying to do more specifically around what's known as workforce housing, which are more for teachers, police, firemen, et cetera. That is something that's, we think, is something that's desperately needed. Affordable housing, obviously, is a term that has a lot of connotations attached to it. I do like workforce housing, because really, the homes that we are building and selling to people are people who have good, decent, paying jobs. Teachers, we have certainly sold homes to, that don't have a chance on the open market based on where housing prices are right now.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I now open the public hearing for the Lee County Board of Commissioners regarding the proposed application for the community development block grant. All those in favor, I would ask if you come before to give us a statement, please give us your name and your address for the clerk to record.
My name is John Kirkman. I live at 3307 English Circle, Sanford. I'm here to speak in favor of this proposal. We have a desperate need for more affordable housing. It's obvious. And so I'm not going to throw any more words at you. Let's do the right thing here. Thank you.
Anyone else in favor, please come forward.
I'll make some comments during this time here, address 725 Sequoia Ridge Drive in Fuquay Barina, North Carolina. Again, without support from these dollars, from these state dollars, nonprofit developers of housing, affordable housing, workforce housing would not be possible to give our homebuyers a chance there. I think this board is keenly aware of what's happened in the markets, how much housing prices have increased over the past two years. On top of that, interest rates have doubled over the past six months or so. It is a hard time to try to become a homebuyer in this market, and so without the support of public funds, like CDBG funds, we wouldn't be able to give working-class families a chance for homeownership, and that's what we're here to do. So we certainly appreciate the support of the county for projects like ours. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for? Anyone opposed to the community? Excuse me, Brick Capital Community Development's grant application? Anyone else for? Anyone else against? Going once? Going twice? I've now closed the public hearing, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is ARPA funding.
Good evening. We wanted to come before you tonight to give you update on the ARPA funds, and to ask you to consider giving us permission to move ahead with certain projects. At this time, we have received the full $11,999,847 that Lee County was to receive for the ARPA funds. At this point, you have, through grant ordinance, allocated $1,999,847 of that for the items that you see there, which cover our grant administration position, our grant research, some funds for grant research, the premium pay that we did at the end of last calendar year, and then the renovations for Horton Pool and Horton Bath House. That left the remaining 10 million that we were able to allocate as revenue loss, or what we also call MB Square, which is maximize, benefit, and minimize the burden. So by authorization of the feds, we were able to do that. And what we have done is we've allocated 2 million of that towards broadband, so we're sitting on that right now, waiting to hear the result of some grant programs. And then we've allocated in the ARPA funds, $8 million for salaries for the sheriff, jail, and SRO to accomplish the requirements of the ARPA reporting. However, of that 8 million, we have, at this time, you've appropriated 2 million of that to go towards the library project to include a board of commissioners chambers and a multipurpose room. We've allocated $576,000 to the Bob Hales renovation for the HVAC system there. We've committed ourselves to $315,000 for the OMI service project, if they receive their grant, which they did, so we are waiting for them to come ask for those funds, and then we'll be bringing that back to you. You've already approved the purchase of a jail full-body scanner using $159,000, and then we have talked previously about using $850,000 for the affordable housing project with Brick Capital, and I believe we, on September 12th, will be bringing that to you for a formal approval of that, for their grant application. That totals $3,900,000, which leaves us $4,100,000 that you can spend, or go ahead and move on projects. And so what we have on your next page is a section there of proposals that are in the green section. At this time, we are asking your permission for us to move ahead with those projects. Those include the playground at OT Temple Park, excuse me, at Temple Park, not OT Sloan. I'm trying to combine parks. Then we're also looking at possibly a shelter with restrooms at Temple Park, at $210,000. We have received pricing for the sports lighting at OT Sloan Park, which includes the T-ball and the tennis and pickleball courts, at roughly $425,000, so we would like to move with that. We are proposing that we take the old boardroom at the Government Center, and make that an employee, a training room for employees, set up with computers, and also, we have a dedicated training room, at any time, that can be used for all sorts of type of training, state-level training for social services and health and other departments, and also just regular computer-based training that IT may want to do. So that, we're estimating to cost about $58,000. And then the next four projects are items that Social Services brought to us and want to do, and they will be, once y'all allocate those funds, and those funds that are listed there are to run those programs for two years. We will come back with the requirements and specifications of those, hopefully in September or October, so that you can see the specific requirements that will be established for Senior Services has asked to use $50,000 for two years to cover rental and utility assistance for seniors. And then we added two new projects that have come to us recently, one being a request from First Health for these Lucas CPR machines to be placed on the ambulances that they use here in Lee County, and the estimated cost of that is $96,000. And then Dr. Crumpton has asked that we allocate $220,000 for staffing retention, and he'll be coming back to you in more details on what he plans to use that for, in the next couple of meetings, probably. So that, that's $1,281,000 that we're asking that you go ahead and allow us to move forward with. The yellow section are projects that you have seen before, most of them are projects that you have seen before and have ranked, but we are not ready to necessarily move on those yet, and are projects that we feel could be reconsidered if we decide to use some of the funding for mental health. We are currently trying to research the best ways to maybe use the rest of this money, or a portion of this ARPA money that's not allocated, to do some things in the mental health arena, to help leverage our opioid money, and to accomplish some things that we feel need to be done, mental health-wise. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have at this point.
Questions for Lisa? Commissioner Carver?
I don't think so, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Good, thanks.
Commissioner Lavalley?
No questions.
Commissioner Sharp?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes, a couple on the, I guess that's the basic needs, that is for what, like 40 kids per year, or?
She is looking at providing an annual closing allowance, basic need of $100 per child.
Yeah.
So at that rate, you could get quite 200 children probably a year, because she's got $4,000 for the two-year obligation.
For two years?
Mm-hmm. So it's 4,000, so it'd be 2,000 a year.
Okay. All right. And the Lucas CPR machines, they will be located within the ambulance?
Ambulances.
And if we approve this request in green, let's move ahead right away.
Right. Except for those specific programs there for social services and senior services, we will be asking them to come back to you with the specifications of the proposals as to who qualifies, and the details, so that you see the policy and procedure for those programs.
So those five items, you'll be coming back with us?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
This is just, we wanted, before we have them go to that extent, we wanted to make sure that you were okay with the funding.
And one other question on the mental health piece, do you have a number in mind?
Right now, there's a million five of this funding that's not allocated to anything or on this list as potential allocation.
Right.
Personally, we would, I would like to see you go ahead and reserve that right now, or reserve it for mental health, and then let's see what we can possibly do when we may come back and ask you to take some of the yellow, and move that from those projects to mental health, to maximize the use of these funds.
Does that require two motions, or one?
Probably two. Do we want to make a motion to approve what's in green, the actionable proposals?
That's correct. That's the move.
Okay. Motion has been made to move forward the actionable proposals for $1,281,000 as listed. Any further discussion? And just for Commissioner Lovick, do you have any questions of Lisa before we move on?
No, sir, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And motion number two, sir.
To appropriate the 1.5?
It's $1,552,000.
For mental health purposes?
Motion's been made to allocate 1.5, did you say 2?
$1,552,000.
Okay, I caught the, I'm just going to go with your number. I didn't write that down.
Sorry.
Motion's been made, any further discussion? Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'd just like to comment that a large number of those items were based on surveys that were given by the public, as well as the board, regarding how we would like to spend the ARPA funding. And I can't say enough about the mental health issue. We are moving forward regarding issues regarding mental health and substance abuse, and individuals in distress. And we're going to focus on working forward with the opioid money in regards to that as well, so anything and everything we can do at the local level will help. Next item on the?
One thing that I mentioned regarding the mental health piece was, we need to identify a way that when an individual is brought in for involuntary commitment, that they can go online, the magistrate, or law enforcement, or DeMark, whoever it might be, and make a determination whether that person is currently being in the system and being counseled. That would save a lot of time, and it would take law enforcement somewhat out of the picture for much sooner than we have been able to do it.
Commissioner Lavalley and I, and many of the staff, the sheriff, the police department, as well as the hospital chief executive officer, and representative from DeMark, and our attorney, we're moving forward with some initiatives and some proposals, so we're on top of it. Unfortunately, just like making sausage, it takes time.
I'll make quick sausage.
I agree, sir. I wish it could be faster.
All right.
And I just moved off the wrong page. Next item on the agenda is legislative goals discussion. And what we'd like to do is add any additional legislative goals to present for the board for approval, to send to the North Carolina Association of County Commissions. We have to have this in by September 12th, and as I said earlier, there's going to be a filtering process from the board to the respective committees in those areas, and then move on to the executive committee, and then on to the General Assembly of the North Carolina Association of County Commissions. So with that further ado, I believe Commissioner Carver?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we tell the NCACC to advocate with the General Assembly to place public defenders in all counties or judicial districts in North Carolina. That's a simple statement. The background to this is that when we went to the NCACC conference recently, we found out that there are only 38 counties in North Carolina that actually have a public defender. And the most realistic look at this is that part of the problem we have in moving people through the judicial system is a difficulty in finding appropriate public defenders to represent people in a timely manner. It's not a question of not wanting to do the right thing. The thing is that, quite frankly, it's an economic burden on a number of lawyers who don't get compensated very well for doing this. I would leave it up to you to think about the moral issue of asking lawyers to go ahead and come forward and carry this as part of their collateral duties, I understand that, but the very workings of it ends up leaving people in jail because we can't find public defenders to meet their needs. Again, I mentioned to you that there are only 38 counties in North Carolina that have such a thing, it's not typical of a lot of other states where public defenders are more common. The other issue that I will mention, just as a byline here, is that we've been advised in that conference that we could also ask our legislative delegation, Senator Bergen and Representative Sauls, to put us kind of at the head of the line and get this done before all this kind of thing is discussed with the, with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. In other words, they'd be running on parallel paths. For the purposes of this motion, we're talking about the recommendation to the association, and we'll be investigating, shall we say, an effort to try to communicate with our legislative delegation on getting it done for Lee County, or our judicial district as it works out. That's it. That's it.
Is that a motion, sir?
Yes, it is.
The first part is a motion to advocate for the General Assembly to include a public defender for our district for the North Carolina Association of County Commissions legislative goals discussion. Any further discussion? Question?
Who would be paying for it? Are you suggesting that the legislature pay for it?
No, I'm, I'm suggesting that, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, they pay the public defenders. There is a truth in, in things here. We end up having to find, pay for the space for them.
Right.
But the actual salary or compensation that goes to the public defender is in fact paid for by the legislature.
And would that be in addition to the now court-appointed attorneys or would that substitute?
Okay, I'm a little bit out of saying for sure, but my impression is that if in fact the requirements for the public defender, the, the assignments to the public defender meet the requirement, then you won't have to go ask the lawyers. But if you have more people than the public defender can handle, I think they have to be passed the lawyers. Is that correct?
I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I do, I do recall her saying, I believe that sometimes there might be conflict cases. You might, would need to have private attorneys on the list. But in, but in general, I'm not sure. When I was at the DA's office, we didn't have public defenders. So I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
Right, because over in Durham, I think for a long time, Mr. Williams was, was the public defender there. And the other part of that that ought to be considered is if the General Assembly would increase the funding for the court-appointed attorneys, it would also help out a great deal. And lastly, are we going to look at our jail system? I mean, we've got people housed for over six years right here in Lee County.
I would say that that's part of what's come out of this meeting we had in July where we're concerned about it. And this would be one of the remedies for it, but it's not prompt enough. And that's why we would ask our legislators to set it in motion for us. Based on what you said, I would be happy to amend this to comment or include the compensation for court-appointed attorneys.
Right.
And whatever verbiage maybe the, the counselor can come up with for that.
I'd appreciate it and support it.
Now, now, the only question I have, I don't, I don't, I don't deal in, in the legal aspects here. One, do we have a problem? And two, will this hurt any local attorneys? Maybe you would know more about that.
No, I was just going to ask you a question. You know, if we go the public defender route, would it hurt our local attorneys and knock them out of, knock them out of money?
Let me offer something on that.
I don't think they would be happy about that.
They get compensated sixty-five dollars an hour. Sixty-five dollars an hour.
Yeah.
Their costs are fifty-four dollars an hour. So then when they're working on this case, they're making, what, eleven dollars an hour? And you compare that to two hundred or two hundred and fifty dollars an hour, which is kind of the going rate. As a matter of fact, the higher-paid attorneys are very difficult to get to do public defender cases.
Right. Years ago in Texas, a court-appointed attorney was paid twenty-five dollars an hour to go see a client. Most of them are not getting real long time because they never get to see it. I mean, the bar can be engaged and others know.
Questions, Commissioner Lovick?
Would we have room with the new renovations we did in the courthouse to, if we got a public defender to house them, would we have somewhere to house them?
The short answer is no. The long answer is maybe. So we have space that we allocated for the judges. They're not, it does not appear they're going to use all of that space at this time. So we could have an office or two that might be available if we had a public defender. I also want to mention the, the jail population issue is what's driving this. And the managers have, have stepped up and said a few things because there, I don't know of too many jails in the state right now that aren't overpopulated. And when you have cases that are continued continuously, that's how you end up with someone in jail
Right.
for six years because of the continuance. So something needs to jumpstart that process. And that's, that's really what we are hoping will create, you know, what will happen in the legislature is that there'll be a discussion about why this is coming forward and that, you know, how to speed these things up without violating people's rights and open yourself up to an appeal, you know, if convicted. So, but six years, that doesn't sound like a very speedy trial under the Constitution me. And it needs, it needs to be remedied at this point. So I would just say that, you know, I'm in favor of both aspects. I'm in favor of the public defender. I'm also in favor of, you know, local, if, if we can generate more per hour for the local attorneys and make it more worth their while, maybe we don't have to hire state employees to be public defenders. But what, whichever we need, you know, either one, all the above, even more, people come up with other ideas, we need to, we need to start moving things through the process.
Think about amending your amendment to also ask the, not only for that, but also increasing pay for the public defenders?
Yeah, he made that clear.
Yeah, I think he did.
That was both, both options were in there.
You just said public defender, you mean the attorneys that are appointed to the public?
Correct, because you said, you know, they, they, per hour, right? It doesn't make it feasible as much for them. But I don't know if it's going to hurt their business. I don't, not in their business to, to know that. But there was two options available, you know, public defender or increasing pay for local attorneys.
Court-appointed. My suggestion would be both. Because what happens is if the public defender can't handle the case, then you're back to square one.
Right.
And you need fair compensation for those lawyers, which is an interesting concept some people might argue.
And the other, other problem we have is if the cases are not getting calendared, and I'm not blaming judges, the conditions are what they are right now, but they're not going to trial, then the county has to bear the burden of burden.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, we have twenty, twenty to thirty people in jail for, for murder. And that, that takes, you know, and they're on trial. And that backs everything up. Plus you add in two years of COVID and this is where we're at right now.
I just watched a five-year-old case Friday afternoon. Five years. No court date. Good thing the person wasn't locked up.
Commissioner Sharp, any other questions, comments? Commissioner Lavalley? So the motion's been made to promote advocating the General Assembly to increase, or, excuse me, to place public defenders in those counties that do not have them as a part of the legislative goals conference of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, increasing the public reimbursement for the local attorneys as well as part of that. Any other discussion?
I think there was prisons, wasn't there, jails or something?
I'm sorry, say again.
I think Commissioner Reeves said something about jails or people in jails, crowding. I think that was part of it too, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Well, this will help reduce the crowding. Okay.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss anything.
We can't force the judge to do it. We already learned that.
Don't remind me. I take the judges seriously when they come to talk to us. Did you get that, Madam Clerk? Could you read that for clarification?
So the motion is to add, um,
Let me help you out. Yes. Motion to advocate the general assembly to place public defenders in all counties or judicial, judicial districts in North Carolina and to consider increasing compensation for court-appointed attorneys.
Sounds good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I don't want to consider, just tell them that. Increase it.
The word consider is being struck from the, from the record. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Any other goals to present before the North Carolina Association of County Commissions? I thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the discussion of addition of a youth commission seat on the Board of Commissioners. And just a little background here, we've had a youth council, excuse me, we've had a young commissioners program since 2013. And we've initiated a youth council as of this year. And while we were at the North Carolina Association Conference, we were hosted at Cabarrus County. And Cabarrus County has a very active program where they take 10th graders and incorporate them into their local government in a very intense way. I made a comment that we don't have the transportation abilities to move all these youngsters back and forth like they took all their 10th graders. But that being said, they do have a student, a young person who sits on their Board of Commissioners, providing a youthful voice. And I just want to share that with you as it came forward during the conference. So if I could get Commissioner Lavalley, please.
Sure. I move we allow a representative, representative to be present at our Board of Commissioner meetings to provide input when asked by the board as an ex officio member of the Board of Commissioners, noting this youth representative will have no voting rights.
And we do have a formal resolution. You can read that, please.
Resolution establishing a Lee County Young Commissioner seat on the Lee County Board of Commissioners and Lee County Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Whereas in the year 2013, Lee County Government in cooperation with the NC Cooperative Extension Lee County Center established the Lee County Young Commissioners Program. And whereas, the purpose of the Lee County Young Commissioners is to introduce middle school as well as high school students to their local city, county, and state governments. And whereas, the Lee County Young Commissioners interacted with local and state leaders to further the understanding of their government. And whereas, the first cohort of the Lee County Young Commissioners continued to promote the Lee County Young Commissioners Program, providing mentorship for the 2014 class of the Lee County Young Commissioners. And whereas, on January 3rd, 2017, the Lee County Young Commissioners became an officially chartered 4-H club. And whereas, the current cohort of the Lee County Young Commissioners are formally creating a North Carolina state sanctioned Lee County Youth Council. And now therefore be it resolved, the Lee County Board of Commissioners appoint a non-voting seat on the Board of Commissioners to a member of the Lee County 4-H Young Commissioners or the Lee County Youth Council in order to add a youth perspective on issues coming before the board. And be it further resolved, the term of the Young Commissioner seat will be from the first month of school year for twelve months. And be it further resolved that the Lee County Parks and Recreation Advisory Board place a young person on their board as a non-voting member in order to provide a youth perspective on issues coming before parks and recreation for the same period as the term for young commissioners, presented this 29th day of August, 2022.
Do you move to approve?
Yes.
Motion's been made to approve the resolution to establish a youth commissioner seat on Board of Commissioners as well as a seat on the Parks and Rec. Any discussion?
I have a question. For the most part, the way I understand the young commissioners, they start in the summer preceding their senior year and have some activities of figuring out exactly where they're going to go the next year. So maybe the time would be better served to be from, say, July 1st to their graduation rather than starting them when they start school.
Well, if we do it that way, and I'm just interceding here because we do have Lee Early College, some of the students go there, and we have our normal high schools as well, as well as we have homeschoolers. So I guess we would have to make it a twelve-year, twelve, excuse me, a twelve-month period, but the starting time will be relation to their actual school.
Okay. Sounds good. The only other question I have is that in relating to their functioning, I think the statement of the original motion was that when asked or whatever, I'm wondering if we could visualize the fact that even though they're ex officio, they could go ahead and volunteer information much the same as any of us do when we're, when we're discussing the motion or whatever.
Oh, correct.
Would that be okay?
When you, you're just taking the verbiage of the statement?
Yes. And rather than say they have to be asked, that they could participate the same as any commissioner does during the conversation.
Well, I normally ask all the commissioners.
This is not a reality show. I'm absolutely opposed to the idea of putting that individual on this board. You know, it would have been reasonable for you to at least have a discussion with the Democrats before you took it upon yourself to just stick it on the agenda and ask for a vote. We're elected people. And you proposing, and it sounds like the 10th grade to me certainly is a child who could come in here with his or her parents' ideas and wishes, not to mention your party, and inject whatever they choose or carry away whatever they can and not be held responsible at all. I worked hard to get elected. I think all of you are elected. Now, if this person is placed on Parks and Recreation or any other appointment board, that's okay. I don't know why they aren't getting this in school. They used to do civics, I don't know what they do now. I've been out for a while and I know, don't remind us, you've been a civic teacher, I know. But you know, it just makes me very uncomfortable to think that I would have to sit here. I take it serious. I don't come in here to do democratic business or to listen to Republican business. I do business for this county, all the taxpayers of this county. And, and you come back with an idea, place it on the agenda, no insight. I don't know what the selection process would be. Who would make the final call? How the process works? You think that's reasonable?
Well, I did text you a message with my intention some weeks ago and never did get a response or a question or input.
I should have told you something then.
So you ignored it?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. If I can add, this is not intended to be a partisan issue. We have a disconnect with our generations, and I think it morally important that they have an opportunity to, have an opportunity to present themselves to an elected body. Not only that, we aren't choosing these individuals, they will be chosen from the youth council or from the young commissioners.
And you think, I don't see through that?
Who, who will choose? Will we be able to choose or is it the council themselves will bring?
Well, that was the intent, yes. The youth council. But I did not make this a partisan issue, and I apologize if that was how it was perceived.
I, I don't understand how you could not realize that that's what you were doing.
Well, I appreciate your inputs, sir. Any other discussion?
Do we know how many counties, other counties are doing this type thing? Or that there are other places doing this?
I don't know exactly the number. I just, I'm aware of Cabarrus County. They have a very vibrant program. It's very unique. It's very intense.
And very red, very red.
I will say, I sat in on the young commissioners. They had two rooms, five tables each, with about five individual young people from different counties participating in it. So it looks to be something that other counties are maybe looking at. And I don't mind discussing it later. I would like to see maybe some discussion on it before we move on with this resolution.
I've got one more thing.
Yes, sir.
Bill, could you come up? You're heavily involved with the young commissioners. I'd just like your opinion on it.
Well, I know that can get a little tricky.
Nobody, nobody intended this to be partisan.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, staying, staying as nonpartisan as possible. I think obviously anytime you can get young people involved in local government, that's a positive experience. I do, I definitely do recognize the concern that without a little bit clearer guidelines about how that individual would be selected, and the role that they would play on this board. I think those things certainly need to be clarified, maybe before a decision would be made to go forward. But we, you know, what I can say is, is we strive in the program that we administer through the Young Commissioners, through the Youth Council, to be as nonpartisan as possible. Matter of fact, politics are not even really discussed at these meetings. It's more about, you know, local government, the structure of government, youth being active and engaged in their communities. So I, the, the initiative is not partisan or politically driven.
Not intended.
Not, not intended to be. But I, but I certainly, I certainly understand how, you know, a position being put on the board, there, there could be some questions. I, I know I didn't exactly answer your question, but I also wanted to be careful to tread lightly because I have been heavily involved in this program, and I think it's a wonderful program. And I would hate to see any, any negativity come up from it because it, it does become a political issue to the Board. So I'm glad to, to help in any way I can to, to make this possible. If there needs to be more discussion or a little more planning on, on what that individual's role would look like, how they would be selected, how we could provide more information, I'd certainly be, be glad to do that.
So do you think they can benefit from appointed, appointments like boards of Parks and Recreation, the Planning Board? You think they can get any training behind that?
Sure. I mean, I, I think having a youth perspective on all those boards would be important.
I'm just uncomfortable sitting in an elected chair and allowing a child to come in here with all the best intentions and can still do and say, wrong people do and say the wrong things. And if you respond, then you got not just that child to deal with, you have the parent to deal with. That is just unreasonable to put a child in that predicament. They can learn other ways.
I'd like to force to see maybe how Cabarrus County went about seating their young person on the Board, maybe do some further research on that.
Bill, thank you, I'm through, you can.
Okay. All right, you're welcome.
Thank you. You're all right.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner LaValle?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly understand where Commissioner Reeves is coming, not necessarily from the political party aspect, but from the place that we're elected, that our voice is because people have asked us to be that voice. So I think it introduces a slightly different perspective, and it would be, but it wouldn't. I, I think maybe some further research in, in how it's done in other counties could be a good thing. And maybe limiting the, the original motion was when asked, and maybe that's what we cling. I'm looking at our attorney.
I was just gonna say, if it helps, I just took it upon myself today, I just thought this may come up. I did email the Cabarrus County Clerk, because I didn't know if they had any policies that they had adopted in reference to this, but it was about 5 o'clock, so I have not heard back from her. Just thought I'd let you all know that.
Commissioner Connect.
You got somebody back there who's heavily involved? You do a nice presentation, I think? You know, I, I think, I think LaValle makes a good point in terms of, you know, having everything set up prior, when you're talking about, what are the rules? Mr. Stone, I think can, can put on a nice little presentation for us in terms of how they choose. Do they have their own elections within the, within the Young Commissioners to choose their, their candidate? You know, things of this nature, just have them do a presentation, iron it out. I don't think you'll have an issue.
Commissioner Carver?
I have no problem with Parks and Recreation and other boards that we make appointments to. I strongly object to having that child on this board.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Carver?
Sure. I got, being totally transparent, I did not think of the perspective that Commissioner Reeves just talked about, and I think it's a good point, something we ought to process. Is it appropriate to recommend that we table this motion at this time?
I'm fine with that, yes.
Motion's been made to table for further discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor of tabling the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Let's put it on there for Mr. Stone to come back and do a little presentation for us. And then he can look at the Cabarrus stuff too, right?
We should have some information by then.
I think that'd be great.
I'll reach out to the Chair. Thank you. Moving on. Next item on the agenda is resolution in supporting Operation Green Light for active duty, excuse me, active military service member in transition to civilian life. For full disclosure, this came up in the North Carolina Association of County Commissions. The Governor of the State of North Carolina has agreed to support this wholeheartedly. In addition, this is an initiative that was brought by the North Carolina, or excuse me, the National Council of County Commissions, and it was instituted in the state of New York by Governor Hochul. So it was proposed to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners to consider doing this at the county level in conjunction with the support from the current Governor. The resolution in supporting Operation Green Light for active military service members in transition to civilian life, veteran status. Whereas, the citizens of Lee County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this county and the armed forces. And whereas, the contribution and sacrifices of the men and women that served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas, Lee County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas, Lee County's veterans population today totals 4,352. And whereas, veterans continue to serve this county in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, disabled American veterans, Marine Corps League, schools, church groups, and in civil service. And whereas, a spouse of a veteran, as well as three veterans, serve on the Lee County Board of Commissioners, and a veteran also serves on the Lee County Board of Education. And whereas, Lee County is the home of the North Carolina Veterans Memorial, and soon the North Carolina Disabled Veterans Memorial. And whereas, Lee County appreciates all the sacrifices made by our United States military personnel while defending freedom, and we believe affording specific recognition to them and demonstrating appreciation of their service to honor and support. And now therefore be it resolved, that Lee County hereby declares November 7th through November 11th, 2022, designating as Green Light for Military Service, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our personnel in uniform transitioning from active service. Therefore, be it further resolved, that in observance of Operation Green Light, the Lee County Board of Commissioners encourage its citizens in a patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who immeasurable sacrifices helped preserve our freedoms by displaying a green light in their place of business or residence from November 7th through November 11th, 2022. Presented this 29th day of August 2022. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution to recognize Green Light for active military service members in transition to civilian life, veteran status?
So good.
Motion's been made, any further discussion?
Anybody in the green light business in here?
We have been told.
I want to know.
We have been told that Lowe's Home Improvement Stores have increased the supply of green lights in their facilities.
I know it's a catch somewhere.
Remember, the Governor supports us. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay.
That concludes our open session. We are now to go into closed session. Madam Vice Chair?
I move that we go into closed session per NC General Statute 143-3181184 to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of business.
Can we take five minutes?
adjourn?
Motion's been made to adjourn. All those in favor, say in five, by saying aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much.